Sixteen, two thousand twenty-five Smithfield School Committee meeting to order before we begin. Please stand and issue your votes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the emergency evacuation health notification shows an emergency. There are two main exits out of the media center. They are located to the right and left side of the media center through sets of double doors. Proceed and follow the exit signs to the exit doorways. There are restrooms located outside of the media center through either side of the double doors. There's a public comment signup sheet notification up here in the front. If you plan on speaking there in the public comment section of the meeting, just please sign, put your name and what you're going to talk about. That's at the end of the meeting. And if you are going to speak at any part of the meeting, please use the podium up here so it's captured by our audio visual system. Okay, very first item tonight is consent agenda items. Four point one, approval of minutes. Approval of the open minutes of the October second, two thousand twenty-five school committee meeting. Approval on sealing of executive session minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Approval on sealing of executive session minutes of September fourth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm going to ask that a motion be made on this part because I will not be abstaining since I was not at the meeting, and then we'll go on to the other parts.
Motion to approve consent agenda items four point one, four point two.
No, not four point two. I'll be voting now.
Sorry.
Just four point one.
Oh, just four point one.
Right, and we need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, and one extension. Now we'll go on. Four point two, approval of bills. Regular bills totaling five hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Direct checks from September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five to October tenth, two thousand twenty-five, totaling forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty cents. And approval of homeschooling, which is on your attached list. This will also require a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items four point two and four point three.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item number five, Kaia, the high school representative.
On October eighth, all juniors at Smithfield High School took the PSATs. This standardized exam tests their aptitude in math, reading, and writing. Not only does it prepare them for the SAT, which they'll be taking in the spring, high scores can be used in scholarship and internship applications. Additionally, the PSAT is also called the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, meaning that students who earn a high enough score are able to apply for the National Merit Scholarship. In the coming weeks, freshman students will elect their class council. Candidates are currently campaigning with posters hung around the school, and they'll give a speech prior to voting. The freshman class council is mainly responsible for organizing fundraisers to support their sophomore semi-formal dance in the fall, or not in the fall, sorry, in the spring of next school year. Next Wednesday, Smithfield's high school is hosting the annual sectional showcase. Here, potential students can tour the school and learn more about the CTE pathways, clubs, and sports teams we have to offer. Lastly, next Thursday, students involved in the SHS Music and Drama Department have the opportunity to see the musical Six at the Province Performing Arts Center. This comedic musical is of modern retyal of the lives of Henry K. Six's wives in the form of a pop concert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? If not, thank you very much. Move on now to, let's see, this would be item six, student regulations of National Merit Scholarship Program.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gives me great pleasure to recognize these students. Tonight, you'll be presented with two semifinalists. Just some background on the National Merit Scholarships. More than sixteen thousand of the high scores representing less than one percent of the nation's high school graduating students qualify as semifinalists. They are the only participants who have the opportunity to advance in the competition. We're also going to be recognizing commended scholars. He's placed in the top three to four percent of test takers nationwide, reflecting strong academic ability, dedication, and a commitment to excellence. These students represent the highest standards of scholars and scholarship and achievement. I'm going to call the students down, and I know high school principal Kristen Ward is here as well. Welcome to come down with the chairman. I'd like to call up Marvin Legere. I have the privilege of having seen Marvin at work. He is not only a great scholar, he is also a terrific organizer. Did a phenomenal job at the National Honor Society induction. Just a little bit about Marvin. He is an exceptional student whose intellect, initiative, and perseverance set him apart as a National Merit semifinalist. Academically, he demonstrates outstanding drive and curiosity, accelerating beyond traditional course sequencing by independently completing pre-calculus online to enrolling in AP Calculus AB as a junior and now excelling in AP Calculus EC as a senior. Marvin is also a visionary who founded a school's newspaper to amplify student voices and foster community engagement. As president of the Science Olympiad, he revitalized this club into a thriving competitive team, and as a track team leader, he supports and mentors younger athletes. His passion for learning extends beyond the classroom, as shown through his outreach to university faculty to explore creative writing and poetry reflecting both courage and intellectual depth. With aspirations in biomedical engineering and neuroscience, he exemplifies the curiosity, leadership, and resilience that define the nation's top scholar. Sorry, if he did this speech, it would sound a lot more elegant. Resilience that define the nation's top scholars. Congratulations, Marvin.
The superintendent's award recognition and recognition of outstanding achievement, two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Competition semifinals, presented to Marvin Legere of Smithfield High School. Congratulations.
Great, so our next student, semifinalist, is our own Kaia Gaffney. She also sits on the school committee board. Kaia is an accomplished student. As an aspiring medical professional, she is dedicated to leadership and service. She currently serves as vice president of Future Business Leaders of America, president of the Smithfield Youth Council, and student liaison to the Smithfield School Committee, where she represents student voices in district decision-making. Kaia is also a member of the Science Olympiad, National Art Honor Society, and Tobacco-Free Rhode Island's Youth Ambassador Leadership Team. Her service extends to mental health advocacy as a trained volunteer with the HCM Teen Suicide Hotline, as well as educational support through tutoring younger students. Kaia is a certified nursing assistant student preparing for clinical rotations in two thousand twenty-five and holds basic life support certification. She previously participated in the federally funded National Security Language Initiative for youth studying Mandarin and Chinese culture. Kaia's academic excellence initiative and commitment to community impact make her a standout National Merit semifinalist candidate. Congratulations, Kaia.
Superintendent's Award recognition and recognition of outstanding achievement, two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Competition semifinalist, presented to Kaia Gaffney, Smithfield High School. Congratulations.
This is Reese Gaffney here tonight. Read about Reese. I believe there is a soccer game going on, but I'm going to read this. Reese Gaffney is a dedicated and well-rounded student at Smithfield High School, class of two thousand twenty-six. She is recognized for her academic excellence and strong leadership skills.
I think she's stopping at the door right now.
I'm going to hold off right now. Thank you, Mrs. Dorsey. If everyone doesn't mind, I'm going to start again so Reese and her family can hear. Reese Gaffney is a dedicated and well-rounded student at Smithfield High School, class of two thousand twenty-six. Recognized for her academic excellence and strong leadership skills, she is an active member of the Tri-M Music Society Jazz Band and Tech Team, where she contributes to school and community events by managing audiovisual production and performing music at local gatherings. Reese balances her academics with athletics as a member of the Lady Sentinel's Girls Basketball Team and participates in various enrichment activities, such as the high school book club. Professionally, she has gained valuable customer service and organizational experience as a sales associate at Staples and as an AV operator, where she demonstrates technical proficiency in live streaming and production software. Known for her communication, problem-solving, and teamwork abilities, Reese exemplifies the qualities of a National Merit Commended Scholarship through her initiative, reliability, and commitment to both school and community. Congratulations, Reese.
You have great entrances here, you know. Perfect timing. Superintendent's Award of recognition and recognition of outstanding achievement, two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Program, presented to Reese Gaffney of Smithfield High School. Congratulations.
Okay, our next student is Audrey Slaughter Biella. Audrey is an accomplished and compassionate student whose academic excellence, leadership, and artistic talent distinguish her as a National Merit Commended Scholar. Excelling in a rigorous schedule of AP and honors courses, Audrey combines intellectual drive with creativity and a strong sense of community. A gifted clarinetta, she has risen to the top of her section in band and has been selected for the RIMEA All-State Band. Her leadership extends to the Tri-M Music Honor Society, where she serves as secretary, as well as actively participates in the National Honor Society, Future Business Leaders of America, and the Smithfield High School Drama Club. Beyond school, Audrey contributes through volunteer work at the Community Cats Center and by tutoring middle school students in mathematics. Her achievements include induction into the National Spanish Honor Society Level Four and the General Treasurer James Diosa Young Leader Award. Audrey continues to model perseverance, humility, and empathy, qualities that reflect both her character and her commitment to excellence. Congratulations, Audrey.
Superintendent's Award of recognition and recognition of outstanding achievement, two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Program, presented to Audrey Slaughter Biella of Smithfield High School. Congratulations.
Next one to recognize, Alexander Howell. Alexander? We are proud to recognize Alexander Howell, a National Merit Commended Student for outstanding academic achievement. In addition to this national honor, he is set to earn the rank of Eagle Scout in December and serves as the Assistant Senior Patrol Leader for his troop. A dedicated member of the Varsity Boys Tennis Team, National Honor Society, and Science Olympiad, Alexander exemplifies leadership, perseverance, and intellectual curiosity. He plans to pursue a career in engineering, building on a strong foundation of scholarship and service. Congratulations, Alexander.
Superintendent's Award of recognition and recognition of outstanding achievement, two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Program, presented to Alexander Howell, Smithfield High School. Yeah, Thanksgiving, you can say, who are these people in the picture?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are remarkable achievements from all of our students that were recognized tonight. They certainly make us proud in the Smithfield Public Schools. Congratulations to all of our students and all of our families that are accompanying here today. It certainly takes a lot of support because these kids are certainly really busy, as we can see. Thank you. Great, would the students mind joining? So six superintendent, hold a veil in the back for a group photo. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item nine, while the people are being taken. Discuss review and approve a template for dean of students. Because this is approved, it will require a motion.
Motion to discuss review and approve a template for dean of students.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Certainly, so this is for potential for a new position at Smithfield High School. We have had in the past dean of students slash CTE director. This would allow a change to just allow a dean of students keeping that position within the teaching ranks under the teaching contract, but certainly to be able to support the administration and cover many of the duties, including monitoring of student progress, monitoring of student discipline, working with the administrative team. I have attached in there a template and job description for dean of students.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I thought we approved the job, the temporary job in replacement of this. So now we're adding another, like, where's this funding coming from? For the dean of students, didn't we just approve?
So, thank you, that's a great question. This actually, because it would be, if we were to post it, would be for a sitting. Certainly, a sitting teacher would be at the salary scale, plus two thousand dollars stipend. Certainly, right now, what we have is we have an interim assistant principal, we have a permanent principal, and we have a guidance coordinator who is also working in the administration. So this would not be an add-on. This would be, for instance, instead of eight positions, so we would not change the number of positions. The interim is a temporary position for AP.
Which position would it be a change of?
Well, if we were to use this this year, it would be a change for the assistant principal position, and simply because at this time of the year, looking for a permanent position, it may be very difficult to be able to find that position. So this is a temporary for a one-year-only.
I don't disagree with the need. I liked last year's model, right? We had an assistant principal, a dean of students, and a principal. I don't disagree with that model at all, but I am very concerned with adding additional temporary positions. If this would replace the AP position for this year, which is potential, I would be okay with that. However, then we run the position of, you know, run the risk of literally having this as a one-year contract, and then next year, we know that there is likely not to be funding to bring that position up. I'm just being honest, right? Unless something major changes with the town council and our funding, I don't see us getting a significant increase enough that we would be able to position enough funds in that direction. So I'd be concerned that, you know, we just, it would literally be a one-year position, and there would be no ability to move forward from it. And then once you get comfortable with that, again, it is very challenging to move back.
That's true. So this could be a position that is tried out this year, and it may be a permanent one. We also have the template that's been approved if we were to move the CTE director position back into the dean position. But this would allow a little bit more flexibility. The other aspect I really like about this idea is it promotes from within, and that's something I've been trying to do here. We have had several people who we have promoted. One is in a temporary position in the high school administration, as well as one of our teachers who was an assistant principal at Pleasant View. Both have been extremely successful, so this does provide our staff with the option to try something different and, if you will, move up a little bit. If we are unable to find a replacement early in the year, because there are cycles with educators, so this is a particularly difficult time for anyone in the education ranks to be able to find a job or to decide to leave a job. It tends to have a bigger pool, if you will, as we get closer to springtime for having someone start July one.
Question. The benefit to having the CTE director position tied to this, there was substantial grant funding for that position previously, correct?
That's correct. So we were able to move that funding to the stipended position. So when that position, when we lost that position this year, the dean CTE, we still maintained the bride part of that that could be used for a stipend, and that was attached to another position. So someone else stepped into the director along with the other job that she has.
I think my only concern is although we may be promoting a teacher to this position, we still will have to hire that teacher's position. So we're still adding additional salary. We're like, what, like last month, we were trying to weigh our different jobs, so...
Well, this would be, only speaking for myself, I would make a motion to approve this only if it is a straight one-for-one replacement of the AP position for this year. If that's the case, then it wouldn't be, but are we concerned that if we do have an internal candidate that moves up, that we'd have trouble staffing that in the middle of the year? Now we're taking an educator away in October.
Sure, so again, not the ideal situation, but it would depend if anyone did apply for the position. But it would be taking away, yes, the current AP position. So it actually would be cost neutral, potentially a little bit of a savings, but let's just say cost neutral.
And again, I think I asked this last time as well. The teachers' union is on board for this as well. They were in support of it last year. Has anything changed? Do we feel...
No, union gets supportive.
The union is also looking for positions where the teachers can grow as well. So certainly, before we posted anything or even brought this to you, those conversations already happened.
Are there questions, comments? I do have one. So we presently are interviewing for assistant principals, correct?
That's correct.
And this is on top of that potential?
This would be, no, it would be if that, for instance, those interviews, which I am not a part of, did not result in a candidate. So it would not be an additional, would not be a fourth position. We would still maintain the three positions in the high school office.
So if the current interview process is successful, then you approve the template, but you're not going forward with it? If the current interview process is not successful, then you would be looking at potentially this being rejected?
That would be correct, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Do we need to amend the motion to, if...
You can amend the motion, certainly.
So I'd like to amend the motion to approve the template of dean of students for one-year temporary contract through June twenty-twenty-six in replacement of the assistant principal position.
Second.
Okay, so, everybody clear on the amendment? If they are, then we'll take a vote on it. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. We'll now move on to, back to item number seven. Introduction of Smithfield High School Principals.
Speaking of terrific hires, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Kristen Ward. Kristen is here. She is the new principal of Smithfield High School. Kristen has twenty-five years of experience. Come on up, Kristen, is that your mom with you as well?
It is, yes.
Let me watch you both come on up. Her mom is a former educator in our Smithfield schools as well, so this is a great family affair.
She is, yes. She's still infamous as well.
Kristen has twenty-five years of experience as an educator. Her distinct ability to collaborate with other educators, with families, with students, and the community stakeholders is a strength that will support all learners within the high school community and within the district. This ward has a master's degree of education from Providence College and has previously worked as principal, assistant principal, and multilingual learner administrator. She has spent twenty years in the Cranston Public Schools. She has tremendous experience as a teacher in ESL. She went through quite the rigorous process to be principal of the high school, including a committee of fourteen who did interviews, two different rounds. It was quite a big pool of candidates. Kristen really shined all the way through. And then she also faced three different forums. A forum, and probably the toughest one, was the students. Thirty students interviewed you, followed by eighty faculty and staff members here at the high school, followed by community members. So all the way through, it was very clear that Kristen was going to bring the high school to a very different level than what it has. And she's been here thirteen days.
Thirteen days.
An exciting thirteen days, and has been really embraced and is already making an impact. So I want to welcome you officially, Kristen. And also, if you would like to say a few words, and certainly introduce your mother. Okay, all right. Just, I'm really happy to be here, thank you so much. It was definitely a rigorous process, but I'm glad I was up to the challenge. So it has been a very interesting thirteen days, but it's okay.
The staff has been great, the kids have been great, and so far, you know, we're rolling with it. So I am really pleased to be here. I am proud to be with my mom, who's a longstanding educator from Old County Road School, Mrs. Castore, Mrs. Ward Castore. It depends on when you might have had her. But it's funny, I met a parent who actually had my mom in kindergarten, which is kind of fun. So I'm pleased to be here, thank you so much for your support, and go Saginaw.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, move on to item eight, superintendent's report. Am I supposed to hit a button here?
Yes, I think the screens might have turned off. I just want to make sure that we've started. I'll just say a few words while that is getting ready. Really so pleased to be able to present a few words about this report. Lisa and I have really dug into the data. It certainly shows tremendous growth in our schools, which is going to be demonstrated through this presentation that Lisa will be leading. What's of interest also is that in a number of areas, particularly in ELA, there is tremendous growth in our schools. But also, when we look at some of the grade levels, we have successfully in math and in ELA gotten back to pre-pandemic levels. So this is a culmination of really hard work that's happening in the district, in our schools. I want to thank our faculty, staff, administrators. And there's certainly still more work to do, however. Lisa's going to present some of the data tonight to you. Thank you.
Are you presenting for this?
She's going to present, so I just want to line up a few kind of beautiful.
Good evening. All right, so I'm going to try to be brief. You know, I get to be a data nerd, I guess, I get excited. I know, like, the team has been working through this as well. And so I could talk probably all night about data, but I won't put you through that. But I'm happy to at any time, if anyone wants to dive in deeper, please just reach out. And I'm happy to go through that. But I'll take you through kind of some high-level overall district data, some of the RIDE overall state data, and then a little bit of the, you know, digging into school level without getting too granular where we, you know, get too deep and start looking at individual classrooms. But all of this data is available through the RIDE portal online. It's public, so you're welcome to dive in a little bit more. But I did include, you know, in the appendix even more data that I won't present because if you notice, this is a big slide deck here. Those are for you all to just dive in a little bit deeper, but we won't go through every single one of those to see. Okay. So in case you're unaware, but this is a part of our, the RIDE Department of Ed's strategic planning, their priorities as we move, coming out of certainly the pandemic. This has been their priorities for the past couple of years. And it helps us guide what we do here at the district in alignment. So again, continuing to focus on attendance. The district and school leaderboards will be live again starting November 1st. So I don't know if any of you all were following that last year. But there's live data dashboards that really show how the schools are doing day-to-day and with attendance and chronic absenteeism. And so those will be going live on the RIDE website on November 1st. It continues to be a priority, as well as quality teaching learning, both secondary success, and our opportunity gaps, really focusing in on our multilingual learners and our differently-able students. And so this next slide really takes us into looking at the overall state data. So when we're looking at how Smithfield is doing in comparison to the rest of the state, you can see here that overall, ELA and math is showing a steady increase. We're seeing some great increases as well. And the high school is certainly increasing and has now exceeded our 2019 levels statewide. SAT scores are slowly increasing, but not to what we would like to see. As a reminder, they did change the test last year. So we are still starting to, you know, starting to see some changes. But just to keep in mind that as you're comparing data, which you can do on the public portal and put in multiple years, just keep in mind that the data does change because of the test starting in 2024. And that we're continuing to work on moving science. You'll see, as a state and as a district, we're a little stuck. And so we'll hopefully be addressing that. And then again, chronic absenteeism, really continuing to focus on that. Our principals in the district continue to work on that. And like I said, I'm excited to see how we're measuring up compared to other schools in the data dashboard. So taking you through our district summary for ELA on RIDE Pass. So here are our scores compared to the state. So statewide proficiency of students meeting or exceeding the expectation on ELA RIDE Pass. A reminder that runs from grades three through eight. Statewide is at 33.7%. Smithfield, very exciting, is at 51%. And when you break that down further into by school, Old County is at 52.5%, Pleasant View at 51.6%, La Perche at 58.8%, and Gallagher Middle School at 48.7. So we are well above the state average, which is exciting to see. Digging in a little bit deeper, I love to see how we're measuring up, and I assume you all do too, in comparison to some of the other districts, some of our neighbors here, as well as across the state. Keeping in mind that some of these districts only serve us just elementary, like in Gloucester, and close to Gloucester, only serving secondary. But they come into this ranking because of the grade spans that they do serve. So Smithfield is ranked at 12 statewide when you take grades three through eight as a district. So taking all of our score. So when you look at the 51% that I showed in the previous slide, that is what we're comparing, at 51% to the other districts. And so we are ranked at 12 across the state. In math, we're seeing again some great improvement here and well above the state average. So statewide, those numbers are small, so in case you can't see them. Statewide math, sadly, as a former math teacher, I mean, this is definitely an area that we're working on, and it's great to see us ahead of the state. But statewide is at 31.4%. Smithfield as a district, looking at our grades three through eight combined, is at 49.5%. Old County at 46.7, Pleasant View at 52%, and La Perche at 54%, and GMS at 48%. So again, we remain steady in the rate results across the district. Ironically, we continue to rank 12 in math as well, with the same numbers looking across the state. So you'll see some of the other players have moved up and down. It's about the same districts that we're looking at, but Smithfield's remained steady at 12 when we look at other districts. Our SATs and PSATs at the high school are definitely, you know, it's an area that statewide, we're seeing some challenges at the high school level on SATs. As you know, you know, that's a different measure, but a valuable one because it is one that our students take to do any financial aid and, as you heard, scholarships, as well as getting into colleges. So all students are taking PSATs at the 10th grade. So this is the results from the PSAT day. You heard that they had recently took SATs or PSATs with the 11th graders just now. Those results are not part of this, it is not statewide day. We do that as a way to kind of help get students ready for the SATs. The SAT that they will take in the spring as SAT day will be the one that will be counted towards accountability and state testing for next year. And we'll see those scores in a moment. But looking across the state, statewide, grade 10 PSATs are 54.8, meeting expectations. Smithfield is at 70.5%. This is in ELA. And then the graph below shows, as a state, at 26.5% in math, Smithfield High School is at 36%. So again, above state average, but, you know, I'd love to see those up a little bit. Same thing with SATs. So SAT statewide with literacy is 51.6%. And at Smithfield High School, grade 11 literacy is at 67%. You'll see that there's another measure here for Smithfield High, all groups. Why does that come up with different numbers? Sometimes they have, usually it's from taking our, just our high school kids, and then the other measure. So the second one is just the high school. The first one includes any students that we have as out-of-district placement. It just isn't noted here. But those are all groups and then just the high school. And then below, we have mathematics. At the state level is 23.3, and at the high school is 27.1 or 27.3, depending on our students, whether we're including those or out of district. Again, those are a little closer to the state average, and I would love to see those also important. But as a state, looking across, you'll see here, districts. And again, I should have mentioned that these rankings here excluded our charter schools and, you know, other non-traditional schools. This is our, just our matching up, you know, apples to apples. So our public, even though charter schools are public schools, just our traditional ELA districts in comparison. So we're at 16th here at the high school for ELA, and 18 statewide for mathematics.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Why does Lincoln show up there as 10 and 11?
What are you saying? Oh, good catch. I will double-check that and edit that and give you the, I must have missed one, I apologize. Must have been a, maybe there again, exactly. The number's there. So we might be 15 there, and thank you, good catch. And someone else might be moved up a little bit, so my apologies, thank you.
You want to move anybody else on?
Oh, yeah, you know, yeah, see, no, we just got our, we just went up the rank. That's why data's important. And then SATs. Science, you know, statewide is, like I said, a little bit of a challenge. The legislation has, obviously, you all know, we've worked really hard to implement high-quality curriculum materials with the ELA and mathematics. Science was supposed to, you know, be starting this year. The General Assembly has bumped that back another year because there just aren't enough materials that have been reviewed and approved by the state. Right now, we still only have a couple at each grade level that have been approved, which we are piloting and implementing in some of our grades. But we'll be looking to expand that. Likely be a budget ask for this year, is trying to figure out how we're doing science. But there still are not, by our state legislation, they're supposed to have five approved for each grade level. We are not near that, so I'm not sure if we'll end up seeing whether there's another extension. But we are looking to have to address that this coming next fall. But you can see here that statewide, 5th grade is 31%, 8th grade is 29.9%, and 11th grade is 31.6. We only test in those three grade levels, as opposed to the grades three through eight in RIDE Pass. And then as you look a little deeper, you can see how Old County, Pleasant View, La Perche, and the high school and middle school are doing for their prospective grades. Looking down at Gallagher, I want to just highlight, is at 51.4. So that tremendous, Dr. Bovee and the team there, along with Wendy Phillips, really working on this. Past year, they did implement Open Sayed. So that's really been the first group that's had some high-quality curriculum materials and already seeing things play off. So keep up the great work there at Gallagher. And I think it's an important, we get very, kind of tunnel vision with, you know, looking at the meets and exceeds and, you know, who is at proficiency level. And yes, that's important because it does affect accountability and it is something to continue to be measuring. Again, it's just one test, and we have a host of other things that we look at to make sure that our schools are successful. But it's also important to note that, you know, the growth is also considered as part of accountability. And so here you see that we've had some tremendous growth. These growth scores are based out of a score from 1 to 99. And it's a comparison of how students, so for example, Gallagher in math is at a growth score of 62. So 62% of the kids at Gallagher Middle School are either at or above the kids that are in the same grouping and same, they're comparable students. So they've been kind of having those same types of scores. In comparison, they're showing a higher level of growth compared to their peers in the same group. So having a score closer to 99 in comparison to other students. So we're seeing tremendous growth at Gallagher in math, certainly La Perche in ELA. But you can see that all the schools having, you know, the higher number it goes in comparing that year to year. So it's a great accomplishment to see not only the improvement in meets and exceeds, but also the growth. So that is a double bonus on what we're seeing this year, so another highlight. Taking a little bit of a deeper dive, again, just looking at over the past year, based on the state and district and by school. You can see here that from last year, we did see growth at all of our buildings from one year to the next in ELA. So you can see that growth there. And then here, broken down by grade. So looking from last year to this year, this is a combination of all of the grades combined. And if you want to go a little deeper, there's additional information in your packets that we won't dive that deep, just for tonight's sake. And then for ELA, looking at our subgroups, overall of our subgroups, so again, the blue is in, blue is the state and green is district. So just overall is that first group, are economically disadvantaged are the first group. Looking at our special ed population, our multilanguage learners, et cetera. You know, really seeing that we continue to exceed the state level. And here, we're seeing in ELA that our females are definitely showing greater levels of success than our males. And you'll see the rehearse in math and science. But right now, our student, female population are exceeding our males. This is always interesting to follow. I'm going too fast, if you have any questions, just jump in. But it's interesting to look at cohort data. So again, following a third-grade cohort, you know, as they go through. So really looking at from, you know, the second year of the pandemic onward, you can see how things are going. So you look across, you can see how we're doing year over year. And then the diagonal is how that group, the student, is kind of progressing through. So sometimes you see ups and downs. And again, you know, keeping in mind that the grade level standards and what have you continue to change.
Now, just make sure I understand that.
Yes, sure.
So start right in the upper-left corner, we got our third graders in 2021.
Correct.
And to the right of them are the third graders the following year, so, all right?
Correct.
But to the diagonal down are those same third graders as now fourth graders.
Sometimes the, you know, the group space slightly changed depending on how we go. But yes, that is correct.
That's how we should call it.
That's how it follows, correct. This, I find, is interesting. At the end of the day, this is what really helps guide some of our work. We are actually, today during our induction program with our new staff and their mentees, their mentors, we were really digging into some of this information as they are focusing on what they're going to be working on for their student learning objectives and what have you as they're implementing programs. And the why, the why of why we're doing all of the different things we do here in the district. This breaks down the components. So we look always, again, generally look at RIDE Pass scores as just a whole. But the ELA is broken down into these three components, reading and language and writing. You can see in the goal bar there is our writing. And so it's thankful that we're seeing a focus here. So Carlton Bratcher, our ELA coach, is, last year started and this year continues. We're rolling out SRSD, which is a strategy on really getting kids to focus on how they're writing, the stamina. What we see is, you know, day one, we talked about that today, day one of the test is often a lot. There's a lot of writing and they're writing essays. And then, you know, maybe aren't used to doing. And then, you know, maybe aren't used to doing all that in that chunk of time. So we're working on giving them strategies. So we are hoping other districts have seen the same, that as we apply this strategy, that we'll start seeing our writing scores. So teachers across the district are looking at that as their student learning objectives and really focusing on that. So they'll be doing a deep dive with Carlton and then math with, with Wendy to dive into item analysis and really looking at student work and how we can improve in that area. So when you dive in, our focus this year really is writing and not just writing in ELA, but writing across the content areas. As we look at math a little deeper, we can see here again, our different subgroups. This is what we're, you know, this is the flip side where our male students are outperforming our females a bit as a subgroup. But again, all of our groups are continuing to be above the state average. So math cohort, same scenario, the year over year is across the horizontal. And then the cohort following from, as they progress through on the diagonal. This one is a little different because math is not quite as clear as ELA where there's just the three domains throughout the whole test from three through eight. Math is broken down into different domains depending on the span, the grade span. So you see here, three different graphs, grades three, four, and five are the first group. And so this is our focus on how we do with operations and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations, geometry, et cetera. So pretty consistent across the grades. You can see that there's a little bit of dip, say for geometry in grade four. And so again, taking a look to make sure that our curriculum units are getting at those topics as well as looking at student work to see where is it that we are, you know, maybe falling down in that area. And that'll be a continued focus. And then the rest are for grade six and seven. You can see our strengths and some of the areas that we could improve on. And grade eight here, the blue bar, the number system, expressions and equations. You know, that certainly is where a lot of the, the higher level math now starts to kick in. And you're moving from algebraic thinking, from the concrete to the more abstract. So we tend to see a little dip there. And so again, continuing to focus that through our math coaching and math curriculum work. Science, we see by benchmark by grade, again, this is a little deeper dive from the earlier slides on how we're as a district kind of functioning here on grades five, eight, and eleven. Breaking it down a little further. And again, by our subgroups. Our males continue to outperform our females in science as well. This one's a little interesting as it does jump a bit. So we're testing grades five every year, but then those students don't get tested again until they're eighth grade and then again until they're eleventh grade. So it's a little more challenging. It's not a direct going down the diagonal. But if you follow the color coding, you can see, for example, grade five in twenty-twenty-one is a grade eight in twenty-three, twenty-four. And so that is their path. So it's fifth grade and then eighth grade. You can see last year's twenty-twenty-four eleventh graders back in twenty-one, twenty-two were in grade eight. And so I'm kind of looking through the progression that they make between the grades, but knowing that it's not an exact diagonal because then they're not tested every year. That test is on a grade span. Just two more slides. So a couple of, you know, last shout outs as we, as we wind down. I'm looking at the, you know, the first overview of our data. And again, the teams will continue to be diving in. The school teams will be diving in. There's a lot to celebrate, but there's always, you know, work to be done. This is a, a ranking as, that's a, a national group that takes each state and does a lot of ranking looking at data. You may see US Gold News Report also does some rankings. So this is the most recent one, which is exciting to see. This does keep the charter schools into their counting and looks at other things, including graduation rates and other items. And so they've just recently released this and Smithfield High School again is at twelve. The lucky number is twelve. If you're, you know, a betting person, you might want to put that into your, into your numbers here. So Smithfield is staying consistently here again at twelve. But I want to especially kind of highlight, Amanda was just going to do a quick two, two-second share out on what she's been doing to kind of really move things forward because we are seeing an outstanding improvement in math in ELA, both in growth and in our proficiency rate. So Roy, at Old County, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I told you the wrong school, at Old County. And so Roy, and then now his name has gone out of name. So Roy Raccoon is there sharing a well done to all of us.
So Amanda? We've done a lot in the past year. We really worked on centering instructional practices in the classroom and maximizing instructional minutes to our master schedule as well as the instructional minutes that's deployed by the district and ensuring our students are consistently attending school. So students being present is key to having that academic access success. So we did three initiatives last year for daily attendance on top of having a chronic absenteeism team. So we have an attendance team that meets weekly focused just on chronic absenteeism. We have the monthly student assemblies that highlights not only attendance, but also their achievement. So that has really boosted students in the culture of the school to really highlight all that they're doing. Within our instructional focus, it has been centered around those instructional minutes and using the high-quality curriculum. But it has done a lot with our common planning time as well as are facilitated with support from our district in then doing walkthroughs and giving teachers that feedback instantly to improve their, their instructional practice. And during interventions, we have done strategically making smart goals for each student to ensure that we're closing their achievement gaps when we have the intervention block in their schedules. But I must say, the teachers are working very hard at Old County Road School. And this is just a glimpse of how much we're really trying to support our students, not only to achieve, like close their achievement gaps, but put Old County where it needs to be on that roadmap. So I can't say I'm doing this without any of the hard work of the teachers.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. And, and I'd be remiss without, you know, obviously pointing out the, the other principals in schools in the room. This is a joint effort with the principals, our coaches, the teachers, but especially the students. So they really worked hard. It's exciting to see our numbers make up. And we just need to continue to stay the course. And I'm sure we'll continue to see great things in Smithfield again this year. Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a couple. Do you have a question? Go ahead.
So just a question about science. So I really despise the words high curriculum, high-quality curriculum. I just think it insinuates that our current curriculums or anything that's not there, it's a buzzword. It's just the newest curriculum. How often is the actual test structure changing in parallel to curriculums being provided?
The NGSA is a fairly new test since we went to the, the new science standards. So they, there was, I would say, Wendy might know this more, talk for it. A couple of years ago, there were some changes, but there had not been any significant changes over the past couple of years with that assessment.
Wait, would you say that the curriculum, the high-quality curriculum that's being delivered should align our students to test better?
Correct.
And so is our current gap more so that the curriculum is not ready? You mentioned some curriculum not being ready. Or is it budgetary constraints that we're not able to provide a straight?
Well, we have, at the elementary level, we have our
I saw Wendy stand up.
At the elementary level, we have our FOS kits, which are not rated green. So some of it is, are the curriculum supplies and materials that we're using at the elementary level are not aligned to the current science standards. So there is more of that, you know, inquiry base and a, a deeper dive there. Not saying that, that the, the money wasn't spent on those. So there's, we should be able to kind of shift with the money that we were spending on with the West Bay Collaborative to have those kits replenish and, and what have you. That money, some of it should be able to transfer into buying new materials. But we do need something that's in a little bit more alignment at the elementary level for science. Science also too, you know, looking at the instructional minutes, that is, you know, it's, it's a tough one to fit in in the day with everything else that is taught at the elementary level. So unfortunately, that's something that, you know, as a elementary team, they're looking at is making sure that science is being taught enough throughout the, the day. At the middle level, Open Said was used and, and so that was purchased last year. At the high school level, we are piloting some Open Said, but we have a couple of teachers that are going through project lead the way training as part of the Biomed and the pre-engineering pathways, which is a nationally accredited curriculum. It has an end of course assessment. That's a national norm test. Colleges will accept those scores from that, just like an AP test. So we're starting to see some ramping up of some of our curriculum. So let's say it's a little mixture of both. Some of it will require an increase into our budget. The rest should be able to take some of what we've spent on some of our science kits and just transfer some of that funding to new materials. But there will be, I'd imagine, an increase.
Yeah, I'm just always looking for, right, we're always looking for the data to put behind our requests so that when we can show numbers like this to the town council when we're asking for, or when we're showing them what we had to cut out of our budget for specific reasons, this data becomes extremely important.
Yeah. Wendy, did you want to add anything?
So at the elementary level, they, I think, four years ago implemented ELA, new ELA curriculum. Three years ago, new math curriculum. We did start the end of last spring, the pilot process for science. So we will be piloting this year. And we're looking at Open Said, which is what's being used at the middle school and also at the high school. So there also is language in the contract where elementary teachers are teaching all subjects. So we try to spread those adoptions out. So we, we did kind of have to schedule out our calendar out the science part of it. At the middle school, they are in a three-year rollout of Open Said. So last year, two years ago, they did two units. One of those was fully funded through RIC, along with the professional development. We've been taking advantage of all of those opportunities that we can. Last year, they implemented four units. A second unit was funded by RIC. And this year, they're fully implementing all six. So I was really excited to see the growth with that. I think that speaks to the high-quality curriculum. High-quality curriculum, while it seems like it might be speaking down to teachers, it actually makes their jobs easier. It allows them to focus on taking the materials, differentiating in front of the students they have in front of them. So it's, it's, we're seeing that, that payout. I think that was also the huge growth that we saw at the middle school. That was their first year of implementation for math, their first year of implementation of illustrative math. So at the high school, we are fully implementing biology for Open Said. And we are re-aligning our sequence. So we actually have a bubble year this year with biology, with both ninth and tenth grade taking it. Next year, we'll have a bubble with chemistry and be fully implementing. And we'll also be fully implementing physics. So, yeah, exciting. And the, the collaboration between the middle school and the high school is really helpful for the teachers and for the students.
And just to be clear, I fully support the curriculum. I just don't like the word high quality. It's just, what do we do next? Highest quality? Like, I'm not in the open there. I feel like I put a phrase
But we are seeing, you know, I think when curriculums initially came out, it followed right after the standards and it was kind of like a mad dash to get something out there. And I think these, this next round has been a little more thoughtful. We're seeing more support in it and whatnot. And I did look back, twenty-twenty-one was the first year of the NGSA. So it's been four years with the same assessment.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to add a few things for the middle school, just to point out, the science curriculum, the high quality is really, we've seen growth in one year of the students actually doing that problem solving and coming up with hypotheses and investigation. Just to kind of explain, the state average for it was, meaning or exceeding the standard was thirty percent of students in science. Last year's eighth graders, current ninth graders, fifty-two percent of them met or exceeded the standard, which definitely is showing the work that our science teachers are doing in all three grade levels with the materials. And that's a great growth for that program. It says, speaks volume to the work that our teachers are doing, our students are doing, the curriculum materials that we have. And I would also like to shout out just for the current ninth graders. So this would be great for the high school principal here, but when they, all three subject areas, they were at fifty, above fifty percent meeting or exceeding. So science was fifty-two, English was fifty-three, and math was fifty-four percent of the students met or exceeded. So it says a lot about what our math teachers are doing. And for that math thing, last, when they were seventh graders, they were at forty-five. So they went up to fifty-four, nine percentage points one year is huge. And we attribute that to all three grade levels. And, you know, I want to recognize our instructional leadership teams. So I appreciate the supportive stipends for our leadership team. They're working with their teachers, the teachers in general, all the work that they're putting into. And our students are putting in a lot of work. And I will share one tidbit, it's related to science, just happened today. And I do have the student said I could quote her, I'll leave her name out here, but she could quote her that. We, that's eighth graders running a field trip today to Topgolf. And it was directly related to the cart unit in science on force and velocity. The teachers went, they had data they had to collect. So this was a class project. They went, they played, they had their, you know, doing their swings. But they had the track, how far they hit the ball at different stances. And they're going to work on that again tomorrow to summarize what they've been doing. But walked by at lunchtime when the eighth graders came back and the student, I had to stop and I sat down and I said, can I quote you on that? Why, what did I say? She said, that trip was really fun. I think that was the best trip I've ever been on. And one of the other kids said, it was fun. And I went, and educational. I go, oh my God, fun and educational together. But it just speaks volume. They saw what they've been studying in science now. And last year when they went to Topgolf, it was the end of the year. But this year, we did it soon because it ties in directly with their unit of study. And that's what's really important for them to make those connections. So, you know, it's all of that support that we want to recognize. But I couldn't go without saying something about those.
Well, thank you, Lori. Yes, there's a lot to be excited about.
So the question I have, a question, a question, a comment. Going back to high school, PSAT and SAT, do PSATs are taken in the fall?
The, the PSAT statewide are taken also in the spring.
Okay, what data is in here for all of them?
What, the data in here is the statewide assessment. So the tenth graders last year took it in the spring, so in April. And, and the eleventh graders took the SAT in the spring.
So there's one year difference, okay, between those. Now, the, the PSAT data is like ten points higher than the SAT data. I'm just trying to figure out why, why do we do that in one year?
I don't believe they made the same adjustments as they did to the SAT. So it is slightly a different test.
Well, I know, I know they're different tests, but, but it's a percentage of proficiency is what I'm talking about.
Right.
Okay, so, so at least on the grading scale, whatever it is there, we, we lose ten percent between the PSAT and SAT. All right, the other one, the commentary on the cohort, now not on the science cohort because that's skip and jump and everywhere, right?
Right.
But on the, the English and the, the math, the, the English, anywhere there's a cohort for, for years or more, it, it, it seems to be pretty much a decline, unfortunately.
I, I saw that as
On the math, however, there's actually increases and there's also bumping around. So it goes, it goes down, then it goes up. It goes up prior than it was two years ago. Any explanation? Well, I mean, that is, that's, that's funny.
Yeah, well, the, the math, and, and that's why that one slide that had the different domain. So the tests do shift a little bit in focus. And math certainly is more cumulative, but then there's a different focus on each test by grade span. So the, it's not exactly following the same level of rigor and the strands that ELA has those same three grades. So they're looking at, they're reading the language and the writing. And you can see that there, those kind of go up and down as well for literacy, but that the, the writing strand is again, kind of sort of decreases as the years go on. So it is, it's, it's hard to compare the two, even between the two tests.
It stood out to me when I was looking at that, you know, that, that one was bouncing. It wasn't a clear linear trend up or down.
Correct. Yes. No, you're absolutely right. You're reading it correctly. And I can't say as I have a logical explanation for it at this time.
Any other questions? If you still have a question, thanks to you.
Oh, sorry. Just to add to what you were saying, Richard, and this could be, but we didn't mention the science of reading training that all of our teachers have run through. So when we look at RICAS, and I don't know, I could just be kind of just viewing it this way. When you look at that third grade cohort going down, those third grade When you look at that third-grade cohort going down, those third graders in 2020, 2021, the science of reading wasn't necessarily implemented. So as the gap grows from 20 to 21, that could be why we're seeing the decline. But if you look at grade three to 24, across, as the science of reading is being implemented, it's going, it's actually going up. So that could be a correlation, and that would be great to see that, you know, scientific improvement.
Right, we actually just did our reporting to RIDE on our progress of students, I mean, educators that are sort of, have met the criteria for the science of reading, the Right to Read Act. So right now, all of our educators have met that expectation that they needed to for this year, except for some of our new hires. All of them are in training. And so there'll be actually a public report out for the whole state. But you'll see that we're right around that, you know, 97% mark. And again, the only reason why we are not at 100% is from our need. So share the call, working on it. But yes, that's a great point.
That's the first thing that kind of stood out to me at the day. And the other part that I guess is more of a statement is looking more statewide. We look at, and I'll be completely honest, standardized tests for me do not define our district, do not define our teachers, do not define our students. Everybody's working, so are principals, our schools. Everybody's doing a great job, from my perspective. The only thing I'm looking at is statewide, we look at, I mean, in our district, there's 50%. Statewide, there's, what, 30%? So then we flip it, and there's 70% of kids in Rhode Island not meeting or exceeding expectations. So I start to look at the, what RIDE is putting on our districts. And at some point, I wonder if something needs to be revamped, revised, to kind of look at our classrooms and look at, you know, there's so much structure going on that might not be age-appropriate for our teachers and our students. So it's going to be interesting to follow the data as it keeps going to see if all of this instructional minutes, instructional minutes, instructional minutes, and not allowing the fun in school is having a big impact statewide. So that's just something, just a comment to see. And as it keeps going, it's obviously not just Smithfield, but it's an alarming rate. I don't know what we're, Rhode Island is compared to the rest of the nation, but, I mean, 70% not meeting, it's, that's a huge number.
Right. Unfortunately, you know, it's hard to compare Rhode Island to anyone else except for Massachusetts because we do use their tests. We've purchased their tests as-is. They create the tests for Rhode Island, so they have any say in it. We purchase it just like any other test. And it's different from every other state. So some states are using a different test, some use their own test. It's interesting to look at the data across the state. The only comparison really is NAEP, which we do have some schools that have been participating in that shortly. We don't get individual results on that. It's really looked in as statewide data. They take some schools from, you know, rural, some from, you know, urban, and then they're, they create kind of a state score. We never get individual information. But it's, that's really the only measure, and it's all more just comparing the state to other states rather than Smithfield to, you know, another community on the NAEP. That's the only one that's really at apple's mouth.
Yeah, and again, I'm not a fan of standardized testing. Like, one task measurement to measure our schools, our teachers, our kids is absurd. Maybe one day, like, RIDE will look at multiple.
It's bigger than RIDE. It is, you know, it's a federal mandate, so I don't know if that'll change, you know, some of the changes.
Yeah.
That there are requirements just to put together the accountability system, and part of that is the assessment system. But when we look at the accountability as far as the ratings, and you've seen, you know, that it went from stars to, you know, different, you know, methods of reporting that out, it does look at things like graduation rate, at our offerings for, you know, CTE, and, you know, dual enrollment, you know, attendance, student attendance, teacher attendance, things that we're offering. So that does have a different measure, but it does take into account the assessment, which is required, and then some of the goals on that. So it is a portion of it. But I agree, we also need to look at our survey data, survey works and how, you know, kids are doing. And then at the end, how kids achieving once they get to college and career after they graduate. But to me, it's a huge factor as well, so yes.
Excellent, any other questions?
Just a quick question. We talked, or we were doing the presentation last year, we talked about those kids that were like, what do you call them, right on the cusp of not being, you know, not meeting or meeting, or other kids, or whoever you want to call them.
I hate that word, yes.
You know it. Is any deep-dive of that a show if those students from last year are now representing the growth into the increases to meeting expectations? Or do we not know if there's a correlation?
Well, we can look at that as an individual student level. That is really something that's kind of done at the school level, at the teacher level, to do a deep dive, and there are data days to see some of those kids, and, you know, do we need to target some intervention? And that is part of our NTSS system, is to do that deep dive. We, I mean, they just came out, you know, a week or two ago. So I personally haven't did, dived into that.
Not expecting it to, I'm just curious, yeah.
But yes, that is something.
Yeah, there's always a little extra.
Teachers have their scores they can see and really look at their kids. So in the, in the RIDE portal, when teachers and administrators go in, they can do a deeper dive by individuals.
Excellent.
But absolutely, yeah, that would be something to be looking at to see.
It'd be nice to see that.
If the kids have need some additional supports, or how those supports worked.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that is actually just A of the superintendent's board.
Sorry.
So now we have B.
I tried to go fast, I was talking fast.
I mean, you did try, it's important stuff, and everybody, and, and letter B.
So just to highlight what Kaye had said here, is the Sentinel Showcase is on Wednesday. I know the principal at the high school and the faculty as well as students are working really hard to make this really an unbelievable showcase. So there will be a letter going out actually to the entire school community because we decided this year that we would open it up beyond the middle school eighth grade. In fact, Dr. Bruvay and Ms. Ward have already sent out letters to all of the middle school students. I'll be following up with a letter that'll go out either later tonight or tomorrow morning, sending it out to our elementary schools as well, so that they can see really hands-on learning and where these pathways are moving to. So there's a lot of exciting things that are happening, certainly at the high school, but at the middle school as well, if we're looking at their schedule and looking at the potential for pre-CTE. And we received a note today from our library media specialists, who are also our STEM specialists, who are going to a two-day professional development to really expand STEM. So we have, a couple of years ago, we're able to have at least every student at the elementary level from kindergarten through fifth grade have at least 45 minutes each week of STEM and STEM activity. So these are, again, to increase those skills. So I think we'll see those science scores increasing as we have certainly these offerings that we're buffering them with 21st Century Grant materials that are starting to be delivered to the schools so that they can do hands-on. We'll see science work as being done at the middle school. And now that we have so many pathways at science, this will also be demonstrated at the Sentinel Showcase. We have the two new pathways, biomedical engineering, which started with its first class this year. In addition, pre-engineering came online. In addition, we started the science research course. So again, students, but the goal is for students to do authentic research as well and to be working with mentors either at the university or at the industry level. So there's a lot of terrific movement that's happening throughout the district. Just want to encourage certainly the school committee. I invite you, as you know, each year to come to the Sentinel Showcase. It is next Wednesday. There's a lot of different activities that will be happening, so it should be great. We've also done advertising outside of the local area as well to make sure that we can certainly boost attendance this year.
All right.
It is 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM next Wednesday, October 22nd. So next week is a busy and fun week. Also want to highlight that the school committee's special education workshop is a week from Saturday on October 25th. That will be right in this room at the Library Media Center. And that's from 9:00 to 11:00. Certainly, there have been, a letter has gone home to the district as well as some advertising of that as well. So that'll be facilitated by our director of special education and other staff. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, we've already done nine, so we're going to move on to item 10, discuss, review, and approve the budget calendar for fiscal year '27. And you have a copy in your package.
So if you just don't mind me adding, certainly open to feedback. A couple of sessions ago, the school committee had requested that there be a separate budget workshop, as you can see by the proposed budget calendar, using that date of January 22nd. So it'll be a little bit earlier than what we've done, but either Nina and the team think that we can present both staffing and operations on that, on that particular evening. And again, it's coming up to the potential for a vote on February 5th just because of the calendar and the vacation. We do have to submit the budget by February 27th to the town manager. So again, it is extremely early, but this is something that we start working on. Really, as soon as the past budget for this year is passed, we begin working on the next year's.
Okay, this will require a motion?
Motion to discuss, review, and approve the budget calendar for fiscal year '27?
And a second.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further questions?
I have a question. So last year, we also struggled with the, obviously, the state numbers come in after the fact, and we had asked the town if we could back up some of the dates. Is this reflective of that at all, or?
I mean, not really. In terms of the budget calendar, and certainly the meetings are going to be progressing with the town, those dates have to remain. So it is unfortunate we may or may not have the most up-to-date numbers by that time.
Okay, and obviously, anybody can be added to this. In addition, these are dates, this can be adjusted at any point. I would want to just make sure that the financial, the budget financial review board is invited to the workshop on the 22nd, and any additional opportunities we have with them to help them understand the numbers we covered.
Absolutely. We've been very fortunate over the past two, two years to have a great working relationship with the finance review board. They ask great questions. They really seem to understand what drives certainly our budget and what are the costs that we really have no control over. So we'll make sure that we do that and to publicize this standalone. I think this is a great idea.
One other thing, and I know we're having a workshop of town council in October as well. Is this something maybe we could implement another workshop before this to talk about budget with them before? Just to have some kind of open communication, some transparency, somewhere in here to build a working relationship with all the parties? Is that something we've done before? Is it something, if we have it, can we do it?
I'm not quite sure that it'll be fruitful. Let me tell you why. I'm just going to comment on Missala's question about dates. Some of the dates that are here, once we pass a budget, what happens to what we pass is all set up in the town charter and how it has to proceed. Now, there is a charter review commission going on right now. Maybe they can make some changes, maybe not. But they're really, the budget over the last few years has almost been, and this is my judgment only, but if you look at what's happening, it's almost to take it out of the town council's hands and to put it in a board that looks at all the information and then makes a recommendation to the town council so the town council doesn't have to do that work. I'm not making a slam on anything, but it is a lot of work, what the budget review board does. And county council, that has to think of all these other issues and all that, doesn't always have the amount of time to do it. And so I'm not sure that it'll be fruitful for us to talk to the town council, who basically is taking a document from another body, to say, here's what we should, should give you, or not. Especially after this year. And this year was the outlier year, hopefully, and that was they made a recommendation, and the town council did not pay attention to the recommendation. In the past, they paid attention to the recommendations. So having a separate meeting with the town council, I, first of all, I'm not sure where you would plug it in, and B, I don't know that it would be any help if it didn't already have the budget review board doing all their grinding and looking at all the data to hand it over. And then, you know, once that happens, it goes really fast.
Right, but I think because it moves so fast is even more reason why we want to meet with them so that we can give context and transparency to our numbers. The, while the financial review board does a phenomenal job, they still don't have the, you know, everyday workings, like when we're sitting here talking about test scores, or that we have to cut an AP and all these things. Those, that's the information that the town council should be seeing right along the year, and if we have one of these midpoint meetings. Even if it does no good and they still cut the budget, at least we have as much information to use.
What I'd make a recommendation is maybe it would be better if we had, if we had a meeting with them, we talked about certain issues that are very problematic for our budget. I mean, let's start right off with one muscle, okay? It's an issue that school committee members have a hard time grasping. Town council members, every time they bring it up, it's like, you start all over again with it, you know? Special education is another one. And there's a bunch of them out there. That, if you talked about those things, that really can throw a budget into cardiac arrest, that's probably better than just sitting down and saying, okay, you know, we need this for, you know, this program for science, our science testing, or whatever. Because that, in the big picture, is kind of minor. It may be important for that particular thing, but it's minor in terms of budgetary. So yes, we can have, I mean, you know, we can have whatever the council and us agree on to talk about. And we, so for a future thing, if you want to talk some budgetary things, that's fine. I just, I'm not a, we'll say super optimistic about it unless it's handled in a certain way. One of the problems with these type of meetings has been dollars. One side wants more money, one side wants to give less money. And we end up, you know, it's all over money, as opposed to other issues that they really need to be educated on. And those issues might be, here's how special ed works. Here's what we need for capital projects, not the dollars. I mean, there has to be kind of a, a sense that, okay, now you know why we're coming in for dollars, but actually, the mechanisms and what's going on in our own process here, that they kind of need to know. They're not going to get, you know, a 15-minute presentation or something.
Right, that's, that's why I figured us all meeting, I think there's power and knowledge. And the more that we talk to them about different things happening, occurring, reasons why, you know, we don't have to sit and fight money for money, but just even have an open discussion about why our budgets are important not to be cut. For more understanding, I don't see any harm in then having an open conversation. The more they know, the more likely they'll be able to accept or understand the school side, I think, a little thing. So that's where I was going at with it. I'd love to have more open conversation, I think, especially in the budget. I think sometimes we may assume that they know or go to town council a little later and try and fight different things, but maybe just even a proactive approach. And I think it could help. If it doesn't help, we tried, and I don't want to say we didn't try. So anything we can do to bring our schools more funding, more understanding for needing, more for our faculty, staff, and students, all four, I think it fits. You know, if it's not worth it, it's worth a try, you know?
All right, let's see, that's, what am I going to, hopping around? Okay, that's the budget calendar. Did we vote on that?
No.
All right, anything else on the budget calendar? If not, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, okay, we have a budget calendar. Item, blah, 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 item 11, school committee calendar. Discuss, review, and approve school committee annual calendar of 2026.
So in front of you is also proposed calendar, beginning in January through next December, of school committee meetings, taking into account vacations and workshops for your approval.
Motion to discuss, review, and approve the school committee meeting calendar. Second.
Motion made second. And any questions? You will note that that second meeting in January is a workshop. It's strictly a workshop on the budget. That way, the budget won't get just thrown in with everything else that we have to do. That night will be budget, budget, budget. Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. We will now move on to item 12. Yes, request for funding from the fund balance of wireless access point installation at Gallaudet Middle School, not to exceed $48,623.17.
Right, and I may call Dave Burrows up to kind of speak about the necessary, certainly if the school committee has any questions. This was discussed. This was discussed last year in terms of the need to upgrade at Gallagher Middle School. And he can certainly speak with knowledge about what the state of that is right now.
Well, when I started the process, it had already been started for all of the proper FCC paperwork to go through for funding for this particular project. So it was pretty much sitting on my desk ready to go when I started. This is to replace all the access points and three switches at the middle school. Those access points will be going end of flight during this school year. So they need to be replaced for, to continue the order.
Questions? Okay, this will require a motion?
Motion to approve funding from the fund balance for wireless access points at GMS not to exceed forty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Second.
Motion made in second. Further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item thirteen, discuss, review, and approve fiscal year twenty-six budget line item changes, which are in your packet. This will require a motion.
Motion to discuss, review, and approve fiscal year twenty-six budget line item changes. Second.
Questions? Comments? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. We are skipping fourteen for the time being. Superintendent's going to get those, that information to us?
To the individual members, yes.
Okay. Item fifteen.
Can I ask a question?
Why not? It's there. And it's a discuss, propose, fees. You can ask, yes.
Oh, this is advertising fees. Okay.
Right.
Nothing, we're separating. Okay. I can save mine till future agenda items.
All right. Item fifteen, discuss, review, and approve additional funding from fund balance for Smithfield High School digital sign.
Just to give some background, this is, again, going back to the class of two thousand and twenty that made a donation. We had gone out to bid last year. It was a significantly more, a much larger amount. Right now, we went out to bid a second time. The difference is five thousand dollars between the donation to be able to move forward with the sign. Angela McCutcheon has answered any questions regarding the RFP that went out and the bid process. But we did receive a much more favorable quote to be able to move forward with this.
Okay. This does require a motion?
Motion to discuss, review, and approve additional funding from the fund balance for the high school digital sign.
Add a second.
Second. And for the coverage to be, the, the amount is five thousand of the overage. That's even.
Any questions? I think it was just answered. Okay. All set. All right. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item sixteen, school building committee update. School building committee really hasn't met since the rapid amount of work we had to do to get the stage two put together as well as the two emergency project. We do have a meeting at the end of the month. I believe it's the twenty-seventh, Monday night. And there, we are going to be discussing, among other things, looking at years six through ten. Since phase two does years one through five. So that'll be there. And Patrick, the, the project manager, does have some information. I guess it came up at the town council meeting that he'll be able to share with that committee, which will, will bring out, I'm going to come in. I don't think I missed anything. I think we got everything going. All right. Item seventeen, communications, copy of new hires, resignations in the district, copy of fiscal year twenty-six budget transfers. Number four, we have one question or one person. Tracy Amadian.
Hello, everybody. Oops. I'm a little taller than the average person here. My name's Tracy Amadian, and I'm a resident of Smithfield. Good evening, everybody. I just have a short comment. When hearing and reading about this incident involving some members of the high school football team and a Jewish member of the football team this past week at Smithfield High School, I felt troubled and frustrated. I value equality of all, and I personally need respect and safety and want to live in a community that mirrors my values and needs. Would this school committee be willing to meet with me further by October thirtieth?
Man, at this point in the agenda, this is public comment. You're allowed to make public comment on any topic germane to the Smithfield School Department. In terms of meeting with the school committee, at this time, the school committee is not allowed to answer that question. If you would like to follow up with the superintendent in detail precisely what you would like to discuss and how you'd like to discuss it, I, you know, the superintendent can then advise you as to how to follow through with that request.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. So I'll be in touch. Is there, I'll talk to you a little bit after so that I can make sure to get all those details. But I'm hoping that a discussion will be agreed to so that we can get to know one another and understand a little better what's going on in Smithfield so that I can feel a little bit more at ease and at peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item, I, item number nineteen, sooner I am to add to future agendas. I believe you have something already.
So not really future agenda. I just want to make sure we're following back up with the cost structure for the fields. So I know that we approved the field usage policy. And I believe on our facilities department website, we need to fix the link to make sure that that's connected properly. And I think the rate link should be posted on that page as well.
That's correct. So that is actually behind the scenes right now. We're doing a few final touches before we change everything out on the website.
Okay. And the calendar system is in place?
The calendar system is working. So yes, it is in place. What we haven't done is been able to turn everything on yet on the district website. But it does work. It does show us internally what facilities are being used, what is shaded for us so that when requests come in, we can easily tell what has somebody, which places have somebody already registered and which do not. So that is still moving forward.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one question. And I'm not sure if this would be pertaining to us policy we currently have or looking at a whole new one geared towards smart glasses and A I. glasses. And I know a couple of schools are coming out with different policies surrounding the use of them within, you know, for safety concerns now that there's glasses with cameras, glasses with information on them and different headphones. I don't know if that's something we have to look at to input in like a technology policy or its own separate policy. And I've seen a couple of schools come out with specifically A I. glasses and A I. Different mechanism, yeah, different technologies.
That's something you would like to look to see if you can fit into one of our policy support. Is it something?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. That'll probably take a little research, but I can be on future agenda.
Yes. As a matter of fact, Lisa was just reminding me, we have RIDE guidance coming out on Monday. So we have had some district conversations about A I. And looking at what we will move towards in a policy. So I think the timing and maybe including that in a larger policy makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right. We can move on to item twenty, which is consider and vote on motions for being ejected in session pursuant to ground law, general laws, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, A, matters pertaining to legal advice and according to the Open Meeting Act, ground general laws, Rhode Island, under the law, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, eight, two, discussion regarding the matter of security, ground general laws, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, eight, three, security. And also to review the executive session minutes of the Act fifty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. This will be individual vote.
Aye, we hear.
Yes.
Motion first. Motion to move to executive session?
Second.
Good. Just testing to see if you pay any attention. Any attention? Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Al.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Mr. Levine.
Aye.
Myself. Aye.